Welcome to the 2022 Fort Thomas Education, I mean, Fort Thomas Independent School Board Meeting. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. Let's see, let me get my glasses on here. First order of business will be recognitions. We, KMEA All-Star, All-State, Beth Rowland.
Hello.
Hi.
So, the KMEA Music Convention reconvened this year after a year off due to COVID. So, we were able to audition elementary, middle school, and high school students to try out for the All-State Choirs and instrumental groups. And we're pleased that we had three instrumental students from Highlands High School who selected, three high school students for choir who were selected, three from the middle school, and then, one, two, three, four, but six from the elementary schools who were, who auditioned and who made it. So, for those people who are unfamiliar, at the elementary and middle school level, we have to record an audition of them singing and submit it to be judged. The high school students had to endure a live audition to be selected to be an All-State, and we're really pleased. Even getting snowed in and being at the Gold House, which, I mean, the digs could have been worse. So, we had a really good time, and the students worked really hard to prepare to get there in preparation for the event and during the event. So, shall I read the names? Or do you want to do that? Or should I do that?
Sure.
Okay, so from the high school, for, for strings, we had Logan Hol, no, sorry, Adam Pollack and Kayden Schroeder were our two strings students coming up here. And then, Logan Holbrook was selected for our band, for the piano and the jazz band. And then, our three high school choir students were Katie Bushley, Jamison Zoller, and Evan Stewart. And then, at the middle school, we had a gate-
Ms. Rowland, was, was Kayden selected first chair? Was that?
He did. He, so Kayden, correct me if I'm wrong, when you were there, you had to audition for a chair spot?
Yes.
So, he was selected to be in the All-State Orchestra. But then, when he arrived there, he auditioned and was selected for first chair. So, yes, congratulations. And when they're there, I mean, Kayden especially, the rehearsals run for hours. So, he, I mean, some of yours were till like 10:30 at night. So, they, they put in a lot of practicing even when they're there. And then, at the middle school, we had an eighth grader, Nora Shadwell, who made the junior high choir. And then, two sixth grade students were selected for the fifth and sixth grade choir, and that's Lucy Schill and Kit Valentine. Okay, and then, we, from the elementary schools, Maggie Hare made the same children's choir as Kit and Lucy did. And Maggie Frimming, Avni Joni, Ella Kate Reynolds, Brielle Stanford, and William Twee Heers. So, congratulations to them. We were thrilled.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
KSBA banner, Bill, Brett.
Hi, good evening. Well, unfortunately, you are just stuck with me for this evening. But I'm here to present our KSBA banner for 2022. So, as you are well aware, each year, as we are represented at the Kentucky School Board Association statewide conference, we have a student or a student group complete our banner display. Traditionally and historically, prior really to the COVID pandemic, it had been a true banner that was literally displayed in the venue for the conference. Beginning in 2021, last year, we began a virtual display option. And so, this is the selection of this year's KSBA banner. The student who developed this creation is Kendall Nurendorfer. She is a senior at Highlands High School. She and her parents had intended to be here this evening, but she was called into work. So, we admire her, her work ethic. I'll be glad to give this on your behalf to her. I will say that this was a collaborative effort between myself and Kendall's teacher, Mrs. Donnelly. Mrs. Donnelly made this a project for her students in her higher level art classes. And so, I had the privilege of, of working with a variety of students in her course to come up with several different design options for this year's banner. There were two requirements that the students had to be mindful of. Number one, the banners must include the school district's name in some capacity. So, of course, Kendall utilized one of our graphics for the Fort Thomas logo. The other piece of information that the banner must contain is the theme of the conference. And this year's theme was "Connect the Dots", which is why she incorporated her design in that capacity. So, we had several selections to choose from. Jamie, Bryant, and myself were tasked with that very difficult selection of choosing the, the most optimal display for our school district, and we're very proud of Kendall's creation. And I hope that you will feel similarly.
That is a very, very good creation.
Absolutely.
Now, is it all on the computer?
It is digitized, yes.
Okay, so when we go down there, it won't be?
It'll be in our programs.
Okay.
It will be on the display panel screens.
Okay.
It's going to be on the website. So, they're going to use that in a variety of non-print media.
Okay. So, we can't get a picture made with it?
We will find a great photo opportunity for our education.
Our, our annual photo with that.
Yes. We will capture that moment.
Thank you.
Now, so, part of the project was to, to meet with, with you as, as our representative and, and to give a little bit of feedback about what to incorporate into the visual. Any, anything that stands out that came from that conversation?
Certainly. So, there were multiple iterations, of course, of both Kendall's project as well as her peers. I think what comes to mind specifically is this concept of "Connect the Dots" and how that would be, how that would manifest best within the overall design aspect of these virtual banners. So, Kendall and even some of her peers even utilized the, I forget what that's called, within the light bulb, but even using that piece to use, to, to make a Kentucky state image and have that be a "Connect the Dots" option. Another thing that we talked about was making sure that there were a variety of media sources available within the actual design. So, here, we're promoting literacy, we're promoting writing. There's obviously an artistic impression with the different color of, of pens. So, those were obviously important, as was the location of Fort Thomas. You know, of course, I'm not questioning the marquee value that our school district has throughout the state. However, if that were to be lost on any audience member, then certainly you see where Fort Thomas is located on the state of Kentucky. So, those are probably the things that stand out.
Great work. Thank you for, for leading that up.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Asha.
Traditional of Excellence Awards, Brian Robinson?
Yep. Each, each month, we have an opportunity for community members, teachers, students, administrators to recognize those who, who stand out and, and represent our district through the Tradition of Excellence. As, as many of you know, we, our, our tagline is "Rich in Tradition, Focused on the Future." And so, this month, we have the, the great honor to have a, a nominee. So, Ms. Graves, could you please come up? Ms. Graves was actually recommended by Ms. Katie Belcher, who is a teacher there. I'm, I'm going to read the, her sentiment in, in the nomination. It says, "It is with great pleasure, I recommend Ms. Cindy Graves for the Tradition of Excellence Award. As a fellow third grade teacher, I've had the pleasure of teaching with Mrs. Graves for the past 14 years. Mrs. Graves is an exemplary leader in our school building. I specifically believe she's deserving of the courageous leader recognition. Mrs. Graves has high expectations for herself, colleagues, and especially her students. She advocates for student success. Her ability to make connections with her students and her talent at teaching is superior. Cindy has spotlighted each student in her class this year, making great connections with them and promoting their social and emotional well-being. She inspires all of us to be the best we can possibly be, and for this, I feel she's deserving of being recognized for the Tradition of Excellence Award." So, please join me in a round of applause.
Congratulations, Cindy. The Board, bravos and updates. Jeff, would you like to go first?
Sure. So, in talking after several board meetings, we realized that we do always do a round robin of things going on in the district. And by the time we usually finish our board meetings, we're pretty much worn out. I don't know if anybody hears a word we say at that point. So, we thought, you know, it's a better idea to talk about some of the fun things going on in the district at the beginning when, when people were watching the video or, or paying attention in the meeting. So, so, just a couple of things that, that went on in the district, you know, recently. One is, I believe the girls' bowling team recently won the region. Am I right? So, I know they did have state, I think it was today. So, but congratulations to them for winning region. So, there were some great shots online from their, from their recent matches. And then, the other piece I was going to, to mention as well, so, if you didn't get to see it, it's too late, but School Rock was, was simply amazing. That, that program continues to do an awesome job. But before the next board meeting, tickets for the next high school musical will go on sale later this month. And so, keep an eye on that. I have been told that it will be outstanding, lots of costumes, lots of wigs. It's got a 50s theme, and so, keep an eye for that.
Julie?
All right. So, the thing I wanted to highlight selfishly involves my child, but I learned it's a really big, great thing that's been happening. I've known about it, but I guess I didn't know the depth. The Scholastic Writing Awards, which are a regional award, they branch into Southeast Indiana, Southeast Ohio, down into Central Kentucky. So, it's a very large area of competition. And it's eighth through 12th grade, all different types of writing, poetry, novel, memoir, fiction, critical essay, sci-fi even. So, lots of different writing areas. So, great, we had great high school representation, because this is eighth through 12th grade that compete. So, in the high school, we had two gold key award winners. We had one student, also one I know of a faculty member who is nominated to compete nationally. So, with her piece, which is great, six silver keys and 10 honorable mentions. So, that's really awesome in the high school. What's really, really cool is the eighth grade, they competed against seniors, eighth through 12th grade. They had 53 awards in total. So, I think that's super great. One young lady was a double winner, is both a silver and a gold key. There were five gold keys, 18 silver keys, and 30 honorable mentions. Once again, large region and with older students, I might know one of the eighth grade honorable mentions, just saying. And then, the other thing, just to highlight a group of people in our district, the counselors. It's Counselor Appreciation Week, and, whoo, they've got a lot on their plate, obviously academics and, and getting kids prepared for life after school, college, career, whatever that might be. But as we talk about often here, the mental health and the importance of mental health and really helping our students, especially some of the challenges of the last two years. So, thank you to all our counselors for all you do. You're amazing. We appreciate you every day, but especially this week.
Okay, thank you. I'd also like to say congratulations to our Highlands Middle School 2022 Spelling Bee winner, Brady Smith, who defeated 27 other sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students to become school's champion. Brady will go on to represent Highlands Middle School at the WCPO Regional Spelling Bee in March. And this will happen before our next board meeting, so I'm going to mention it. The Fort Thomas Education Foundation are having their annual dance March 5th at the spacious Newport Car Barn. Early ticket price is $35 and includes food, dancing to the band Floyd and the Walkmen. And you can purchase tickets at donation.ftef.org. If anybody has had the opportunity to go, it's always a, a really fun time. How many years has this been now? About?
Twenty.
Twenty? This is the 20, 20th year. And it's, it's very good. Did I miss, did I miss anything?
No, you did great.
Okay, all right.
It's a great band, too. That band.
So, if you have an opportunity.
I heard they had an awesome tambourine player.
We're not going to talk about that.
Okay.
All right.
Just saying.
All right.
I have a couple of quick announcements since we're, since we're not doing it to end, we'll upfront, and, and really being excited about getting involved and, and celebrating our, our students and teachers and, and a variety of activities, things that are coming up before the next time we meet. Woodville has an art show this coming Thursday evening. We encourage you to come out and see that, 5:30 to 7:30. They'll also, Woodville is going to be leading a Community Learning Day on the 17th of March. This is during the day, so it's not super accessible to the public. But I think it's really important because we're going to have schools from across the region that are coming to, to learn from our students and, and the leadership opportunities that they have at Woodville Elementary. Johnson Elementary will be celebrating or hosting the Regional Academic Team Meet this Saturday. Moyer Has Talent is this weekend, so get out and see some of, some of our talents at Moyer, Mustangs. The Middle School Talent Show is February 25th. And two other quick things I'd like to say, first of all, is best of luck to, to Sam and Megan Reynolds, who will be representing all of Fort Thomas's Bangals on the biggest stage on the planet here at the Super Bowl this coming, this coming Sunday. And, and I want to give a special thank you to, to our maintenance staff, custodians, Jerry Wisman on removal of, of ice and snow in a, in a really funky storm here. There's still districts that are going to be off tomorrow, and, and our team really did a great job of, of making sure that school is ready for today. So, I want to say thank you to them.
Yeah, that's a good one. Yep.
It's time for our student showcase. It's Johnson Elementary Genius Hour and Enrichment. Marie Zimmerman?
They're coming in.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. I am Marie Zimmerman. I'm the Library Media Specialist at Johnson Elementary. And I have some students here that are going to tell you about our enrichment program that we have at Johnson and our Genius Hour projects that we're doing. So, I have-
Emma Claire.
Bailey.
Rex.
All right. At Johnson, we have an enrichment time that is set up for every grade level. They get half an hour, and it's based on student need. It could be they're, they're getting RTI. They might be working on something relates to Culture Night or Veterans Day, PBL Experience. And just recently, I started an enrichment club. I surveyed my fifth graders with a whole bunch of topics related to items available in our maker space. And I decided they would be my guinea pigs for an embroidery enrichment. And I have 10 students in that club. We meet twice a week on Tuesdays and Thursday. It's when my schedule coincided with their enrichment. So, we are putting together a Harry Potter embroidery kit. It comes with everything you need for two of the projects and then directions for eight. So, I have been doing that with them, and I have an example. I'm working along with them. That's a, a passion of mine that I'm introducing to students. And in a few weeks, we're going to be starting a book club with another 10 students. And then, in fourth grade with Mrs. Flynn, we're going to be starting a sewing club. So, it's things that we're working together. And I actually have two of my students who are in the embroidery enrichment, and they're here to talk about what they think.
For the embroidery enrichment, it's a really fun thing to do instead of school, but you're still learning something. And it gives us a break from other schoolwork.
For the embroidery enrichment club, I like it because it gives me something to do at home. And at the end of the day, I'm always looking forward to go home and get to work on it.
So, they're my guinea pigs, and hopefully, I'll be able to do an enrichment with all the grade levels. But so far, it's, it's a lot of fun. Something else that we're doing in the library is Genius Hour. It is a time that you could do during library, but also enrichment if it meets your needs. It is for fifth grade, and they get to research a passion. And then, I approve the project idea. They have to use the Big Six research process that we start in third grade. They have to have three sources for their topic. And then, there's a requirement that they have to share their learning. Now, that learning can be with other classmates in the fifth grade. Or, last year, we started a fun station, it was the last day of the school, where teachers and fifth grade students, they chose a topic, and we had sessions very similar to a conference. And our third, fourth, and fifth grade students, they signed up for a session, "Oh, I want to, I want to learn how to, you know, improve my basketball skills. I want to learn how to create a landscape portrait." They just sign up. It's very conference-like. So, that is a student-led experience that our students will have the option to present their Genius Hour project at. And we have had a lot of different topics. These are just a few from this year. How do I create a quality podcast about the NFL? How can I design and sew skirts? How do you use a pottery wheel to create pottery? How can I improve my football throw? How do you 3D print your own design? What was the scandal at the Super Bowl with Tom Brady? If a football is deflated, does it affect the throw? Mrs. Kuhnheim, that's what your son's working on. He's got a little group. How do you create a logical and interesting board game? How do you crochet a scarf? What is animation? And how can you animate using the iPad? How do you bake a cake? Those are just a few of the topics that we have. And we have three students here today who are going to share their topics with you.
The topic I chose was "How Do You 3D Print?" And I chose this because I wanted to know how the 3D printer worked and what the object would feel like when it's finished. And I've learned how to create on Tinkercad and how to combine different objects. And the project idea at the end is to teach others how to create their name on Tinkercad.
My project is "How Do You Prepare to Climb a Mountain?" I've always been interested in, in what clothes help mountain climbers survive. What I've learned is that mountain climbers always want to have breathable fabric. My project idea is an activity where our kids will select items that would help them survive, and I will tell them what's a good choice and a bad choice and why.
I picked "How to Embroider the Old Johnson." I picked this because I've always liked hand embroidering, and I wanted to keep sake of the old Johnson. I learned that it's challenging to find different, like, types of stitches to use. And color of brick is an unusual thread color. I'm, I have an idea of teaching kids for like the last day of school some stitches.
And now, if you all have any questions for us?
Yes. Rex, are you going on vacation? Or are you gonna, or do you just want to look up, have a mountain climb and teach someone how to have a mountain climb? Or do you want to experience it yourself? Or have you?
I just wanted to look it up and see how, like, it helped them.
Okay.
Did you find a mountain that you wanted to climb? No? Not yet?
Think we should get your dad on the mountain, wouldn't you?
On the, on the 3D printer, there were several items on the bottom. What were those? I couldn't.
So, we made different-
Right there.
We made flowers.
Okay.
And since the stem's so small, and it goes up to like the bigger, the bigger part of the flower.
Mm-hmm.
We had to make a structure. So, in like, in the different pictures, you can see how, like, you can see the first thing we made into the different structures that had to be on the outside into the final piece without the structure.
Very cool. So, what's the next thing you're going to make on a 3D printer?
Well, we're going to try to make the different colors and the flowers. And then, we hope to put them on a piece of paper and like make a little bouquet.
Nice.
All right, Emma Claire. So, you said you'd like to do handwork. Did anybody introduce that to you? A family member, a friend, or anything?
Well, my grandma, like, always like expelling and stuff. So, my mom found this, like, summer camp, and it was working and burning and expelling. So, she signed me up, and I'm into that.
Now, you can share that with some of the others.
Now you can share that with some of the other students. That's really cool. Thank you.
So my question is, how is what you did in Genius Hour similar or different than maybe some other projects you would have at school?
For Genius Hour, we can pick what topic we can... that we can research, but in other projects, we kind of have to stick to a topic.
Yeah, something you're passionate about, right? You found one.
Like the mountain.
But are there things that are similar? I heard Ms. Zimmerman say the Big Six and research. Are those things you guys use in some of your other classes? Are you learning anything about that?
We've used it in other classes before, for, like,摄影项目 projects and math projects for, it's a new research, like, a type of something.
And so now you're getting to apply it on things that you choose, right?
Yeah.
Well, thank you for sharing so many of your... I mean, this is extra stuff that you guys just are pursuing because you're interested in it. And so hopefully you see all of the things that you're learning at school, how it comes together, and you can pursue some things of great interest. I can't wait to see what you come up with.
Great job presenting today.
Thank you. All right. We have Healthy at School update. Jamie Flaherty.
Good evening.
And again, we have moved this in our agenda because it has sort of predicted a lot of our community forum conversations and questions really focus around some of the decisions that are made around Healthy at School. And so it's a little bit out of order compared to many months, but it also may address some of the questions that may be at form.
So this evening, I bring you additional data. If you recall, in January, I did present to you some trends that we had from previous year to the most recent first week of school. So I would like to update you with where we are with our attendance for both students and teachers, as well as our COVID numbers within our district and our region, and then talk about any new changes that we've been discussing since we've met last. So first, we're going to cover our current trend data. And I put this all on one sheet today, so I hope that you can reflect and see the colors black are current year, January, early February, in both sets of data. So considering, black would be current year, and then red would be our previous year. So the top set of data points would indicate the first several days of the beginning of the second semester in red in 2021, and in black, 2022. These were the same numbers that we discussed in January. We had the same data set, and we recognized, looking at day six, the differences of our data between the previous year and then our current January experience with lower attendance for our students. So with that in mind, then we can reflect upon the bottom set of data that shows current last week. And we do not have days reflected of today. I did not put that on there because we use this to develop the communication around our parent communication on Friday. So I wanted you to be able to see what we were looking at. However, you can see that our 2022 data at the bottom reflects similar trends to the red data at the top in a positive way, showing that we have positive experiences with our student attendance. We have jumped back up to a reasonable number percentage for each day. A typical day non-COVID would be 98, 99%. We're typically one of the highest districts. In fact, our high school at times, the high attendance day, we've been the highest-attended high school in the state before. That was prior to COVID. So we know that we have the expectation from our schools and our parents that our children are in school. So this reflects higher attendance February 2nd. We are ranging 96, 97%. Then, as we looked last month, we look every day at this data to reflect and let you know. This is public data that's supplied to us by NKYhealth.org. That is our health department's webpage. It is somewhat hidden now. It's in a different location. So if you're looking at it on their website, it's not on their front of their page as it laid. It was presented in the past. It is actually under COVID-19, and you look up the dashboard to find these data points. The regional map on the left shows that as of Thursday of last week, we were all red. The data actually today indicates that there's one ZIP code that's turned orange within our region, so that's exciting to see. The graph on the right and the numbers on the right reflect last week. On the third, we were at 116 cases per 100,000 on a seven-day rolling average. Today, we are at, I don't want to get it wrong, 61.9. So we were seeing over the course of last week a decline of approximately 20 as an indicator per day. It was delayed. It typically is delayed a day, and so this is reflective of February 6th for the 61.9. Then, I also wanted to share a comparison of where we were with positive cases, and this is different than what you see on our dashboard. On the dashboard, if you look at positive cases, you are going to see that you are going to have an accumulative number over the quarantine or isolation period. So if a student falls on, they don't roll back off until they're out of their isolation or the quarantine. So it's really hard to determine how many cases go up in a given day and then how many cases are falling off because there is fluctuation in both. But you can see, starting on January 28th, the top data set through February 5th, the number of new cases in a given day. Now, in the middle of the week, we were getting delays in the sense of kids were out for five days without us knowing that they were out with confirmed positive case. They were isolating and quarantining, but it wasn't reflective until after they were already exiting. I still put those cases on there, and you can determine that by the total active recovered cases, that increases because of those students. So an example on February 1st is 18 cases were added to our dashboard, but 10 were only active. The additional eight just rolled up to the recovered section. Then, our impact on isolations and quarantines. So we spend a lot of time talking about our positive cases, but we don't necessarily look at the impact of the kids that are missing due to quarantines. And so those are both coded inside Infinite Campus the same way so that you can see on one day, our last school day last week, Wednesday, those numbers represent the number of kids that were excluded from school from either an isolation or quarantine. That does not include teachers. So 9, 14, 12, 7, and 7. Today, current numbers, which could change because those could be adjusted after the fact, are respectively 3, 4, 6, 6, and 3. So we are seeing that those adjustments are declining, just like our other numbers there. Then we'll look at attendance. So current year attendance, the top set of data would have been the presentation from January so that you can see where we were at the beginning of the month. And then at the bottom, our report will show you moving into February. And you can see our unfilled, that was an important consideration early January, where we were having on that January 10th day, we had 11 unfilled between classified and certified. Today, our numbers are not up there, but today we have 10 certified out, one unfilled. We have five classified out and zero unfilled. So you can see total absences for today for employees, it's 15, but we only have one that remained unfilled for that. So absences by employees would also be improving and showing reflective of the first semester. So we want to make sure that we consider our next steps. As you can recall, before we were coming back second semester, it was proposed that we were going to discuss optional masking. We laid out the parameters. We moved in that direction, talked about quarantining and isolation and the changes that were going to be made with that. And then we had to pivot after the most recent board meeting to make a change to adjust to the data that looked differently than tonight. So I want to show you that, reminding us of our objective, so reminding you that, you know, it was a commitment that you had made and that we have been sharing as a leadership team, that we maximize our in-person learning. Every day that we are in school, that we can have as many teachers and staff present as well as having our students present. There was a time in the period of January where one school particularly had 16 pages of absent kids. And so not only were those positives a situation, the lack of instruction for those 16 kids that were fluctuating in and out became problematic. So we're looking to make sure that we avoid that moving forward, but also responding to the trends. We also want to remind everyone that we have the luxury to be able to locate and analyze our local data. So looking at our 41075 data, looking at our school data, looking at the presented sets that I shared today, indicate what we can control and what we can't control. And because of that, we do feel like there is an opportunity for us to move forward with a different recommendation that was actually presented on Friday to our families with communication to them about masking. And so with this, we created a set that would recognize when we would fall in and out of masking with the understanding it is not our objective to be frequently moving between these two rows. It would be our objective to make sure that we, you know, we are responding to the situation, but mask optional would be where we would like to be moving. And so with that, you can see that we have determined that Fort Thomas's district number would be less than 25, and we're below that now. And then the incident rate for the ZIP code 41075 would be less than 50. Now remember, I just shared that we are at 61.9 today, and that's been dropping about 20 in a given day, but it dropped significantly for today. So with that being said, over a period of a couple of days, then we would make the determination, knowing that we're stabilized, that we would then recommend mask optional for our schools. Then, looking at the opposite, if we were mask optional and we get to a place where we are below 25 and 50, but our numbers start to go up dramatically, much like a January 3rd, 4th, 5th experience, we need to be able to stop and pause and consider, not in one given day, but over a period of time if we need to move into a mask-required environment for our schools. So this was communicated through a parent piece on Friday, and I know that we are hoping that this would maximize our mask optional arrangement within, you know, maybe by the end of the week or so with the trends that we're seeing today. Do you have any questions about that? Okay. Mr. Robinson, would you like to share anything? Okay. Okay. So then, the impact on changes would be my last slide. So each month, I'd like to share what would be changing from the previous month, and that would be, obviously, we're going to be watching the protocol for mask optional. And then we would not get into a situation if we go mask optional that we are going to be communicating to our classes. So what I mean by that is if a particular positive exposure occurred at Mr. Augustine's class, we would not be looking up the students in Mr. Augustine's class to then send an email blast out to those parents. It would be an assumed that there would be possible exposure each day our children are here, so we would not be contact tracing or working through that process. We would continue to follow the isolation and household exposure protocol that we're following now. And just to remind you, that would be if you're a positive case, you remain out of school through your fifth day, but on days 6 through 10, you can return, but you will have to wear a mask because you will still be able to spread. You would still be contagious at that point, but still able to be within the confines of our school. And then for household exposures, you can be tested on day 5 to return on day 6 and then have to wear a mask day 6 through day 10, just like those that would be positive. And those are the protocol that we've been following over the last month, and we would consider changes once our numbers would be much low... excuse me, lower to consider that. Any other questions?
And I'm sure we'll have some input and feedback and questions about, you know, how a lot of this was developed and articulated and so on. You know, for two years, we've gone through patterns of learning the impact that this pandemic's had on schools, on communities, on businesses, on families, on a whole variety of people. And so we've learned quite a bit. We've learned what happens with students on a day-to-day basis. We've had students that have had definite negatives in terms of what they can participate in and the manner by which they participate in it. We came back into the school year with full expectation and anticipation of having a mask optional. But as I told you back in January, we also saw the impact that that had on our attendance, on our... whether it was masking or not. The attendance patterns for our teachers, for our students, had a dramatic impact. And so we promised that optional was going to be something that returned. What I've also noticed is as things change, whether it ramps up in infections or it declines in infections, all that has been constant has been the constant and continuous angst that's created when situations change. And so this was really about trying to articulate the manner by which we'll make our decisions. What I'll tell you is it seems like we were very close to being in an optional scenario, even faster than I expected that we would be last week. It's coming really quick. On the other side, I also think it's important that you know how we would consider looking at other information if it ever grows again. You know, I've had some questions over the last several days about that we will be over 100 in a moment's notice, and what I can tell you is we never went over 100 in all of the calendar year of 2021. Not a single day in 41075. In terms of 50, we were only over the 50 mark five separate days in our first semester. So we have established numbers that if it gets to that point, there are significant challenges in our schools. And so we have to consult public health officials at that time, hospitals, Department of Public Health, Northern Kentucky Health Department for strategies in terms of how you would address this. And so it could be changing distancing requirements, changing small group instruction, avoiding large assemblies, potentially masking, because all of the information frankly is changing on that on a daily basis, and it's changing in a way where I don't know that there's universal consensus in the medical field. So by that time, which I hope will be never, but who knows? Maybe the public health officials will have different recommendations, but we don't... we're very hopeful that that won't ever get to that point. So I would expect, again, we were at 359 in the second week of January for our local incidence rate. On Friday, we were at 119, and today we were at...
For 100,000.
For 100,000.
16,000.
I got it. Thank you, Maggie. I got it. And today, we are at 61. So we're seeing a very rapid decline.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions from board members?
No, and I, you know, you and I talked about it. I think, you know, I think most of the public would probably heard us talk about masks more than they want to. But, you know, it's... what I saw that happened the first couple of weeks of January, it was not a sustainable situation. I mean, the pressure on our nurses and our staff during that time was... it wasn't good, and it really wasn't fair. time was, wasn't good. It really wasn't fair. So, you know, I think that the numbers that you've put together allow us to function. When it goes beyond that, it's not really a functional environment. You know, and like you said, I mean, based on the trajectory, I mean, I would be surprised if we're not mask optional very fast. So, you know, I think it's good. I think based on history, I think it's a good situation. You know, you know how I prefer in the long run, but also I've got to look at the entire school and the attendance, both in the students and the teachers during that timeframe, it wasn't sustainable. And we were lucky we didn't close. And, you know, I want to make sure that we don't get in that situation again.
And really, our updates really around healthy at school are when we have changes. And so those are the changes that are most recent.
Well, we'll look forward to your guidance as the week progresses. Jamie? Next on the agenda is the community forum. I have a statement to read. "The community forum portion of the meeting of the Board of Education is an opportunity for members of the community to inform, address, formally address the board about a variety of topics, including issues for future consideration. Since the topics raised may not be issues listed and advertised on public agenda, the public forum is not intended to be a setting for dialogue with the board. Direct questions may be referred to the appropriate district personnel for future response. Answered briefly if a matter of procedure or tabled, as they may be a future agenda item. Speakers who have registered at the reception area are asked to identify themselves and state the reason for addressing the board. Please address the Board of Education as a whole through the chairperson rather than individual members. Pursuant to state and federal laws, questions or comments pertaining to an individual, student, employee, or community member cannot be discussed in open meetings." We have almost 20 people who would like to speak. So I'm asking that everyone take two minutes for your statements.
I have two questions just prior to that, because last month, someone was allowed to speak close to 10 minutes. So how strictly is this two-minute going to be adhered to?
We're going to try to keep it to two minutes today. Thanks for...
But it seems as if...
I can't speak the last month. I mean, we tried to maintain, we tried to maintain two minutes last time based on the number of speakers. You know, we are going to ask that you keep it to two minutes today. So if you cross two minutes, then I'll ask you to shorten, okay?
It's hard to tell when you're shorting it when you're...
Two minutes.
Okay, so can I go out and hold test for a while?
Sure.
This is the most unreasonable thing. Not only was last month, somebody went close to 10 minutes...
I don't believe that's true.
Close to 10 minutes. Way more than two.
Ms. Ferris, if you want to go practice, you may, but we're going to try to keep it to two minutes tonight.
I understand.
Let's try to be fair to everybody in here.
But following that, and I'm for Ferris, following that, a teacher said, "Well, you said no mask, so I'm not going to have to give you my seven and one-half-minute talk that I have prepared." Check the tape. That's almost worth the work.
I don't know what they were going to do ahead of time. We're just asking you to keep it to two minutes based on the number of people that have signed up tonight, based on the respectful, the people that are in here that are giving their time.
Respect is generally mutual.
Okay. If you want to go practice, you may go practice, and we'll call you, okay?
I want to speak. It's nowhere near the length of time from last month's...
We're going to ask you to keep to two minutes. If you can't keep to two minutes, then we'll ask that we'll take a break, and then we'll start up again. But we're going to go two minutes. And I would appreciate if there not be any talking in the audience while we're having our meetings. It does echo into our speakers. So unless you want to speak at the microphone, please don't talk in the audience.
May someone relinquish their time? I'm not, I'm really, I don't have a big long...
We're going to do two minutes, and I'll let you get started.
And I have you first on the agenda to speak, Jen Ferris. "It's time to stop this madness. Are you killing the patient under the guise of treating the virus? Let's look through a rearview mirror. Think about the kids forced to be masked three years ago. You can't even visualize it. That picture could not have even been imagined. It was seen only in Communist China. Yet today, it's getting hard to visualize a classroom of children whose faces you even see. It's horrendous that a beautiful, smiling class picture remains nothing but a distant memory in the rearview mirror. Let's pretend it's that time that we see in our rearview mirror, and you're creating your original policy objectively rather than politically. This was a time when you should have set guidelines for when the numbers of district-wide cases rose above 25 and the incident rate for ZIP code 41075 rose above 50 per 100,000 residents. Why are you dictating masks forever unless we can pass your arbitrary point-value system that is nearly impossible to reach? Why are you playing defense? Why are we not masks optional until things get terribly worse instead of masks mandatory until things get impossibly better?" How long, never mind. "Until you follow the science, you must at least change the vocabulary. Don't use the word temporary if you mean forever and then some. Don't use the word 'healthy,' as in healthy at school, unless you redefine the word. There is nothing healthy about creating children who have no idea how to smile at a classmate. Nothing healthy about creating children who draw self-portraits with blank faces, no noses, no mouths. Nothing healthy about creating children who are not learning to read proficiently because phonics can't be taught from behind a mask. The sounds and the words are garbled. Above all, there is nothing healthy about creating children who are being taught that a tyrannical government is an acceptable government."
I cede my time, Ms. Ferris.
Please don't interrupt. We're not ceding time. Please finish up, Ms. Ferris.
Thank you.
A vocabulary that is accurately defined, and is very short, and clearly understood, is hypocritical. The hypocrisy of seeing maskless adults being the ones who dictate that children be masked for hours on end every Monday through Friday is beyond belief. Sure, you might catch one of these people wearing a mask on occasion, but only for a minute or so as they enter a sporting event or head into a restaurant for drinks with friends. But once inside, the masks come off immediately. Not six hours later, which is what you're expecting of the kids, but immediately. But the most offensive to me is when one of these people wears a mask only when they know the camera is running, as it is here tonight. Based on last month's meeting, where a pro-mask parent was allowed to speak for approaching 10 minutes, I estimate that I should be allotted about seven more. But to be honest, I'm close to being speechless from hearing what I've heard at these minutes meetings for the last several months. With that, I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I think we mentioned it last month. Please be respectful. This is not, we're not, we're not, it's not a cheering section. We're here to talk about the education of our kids. We're not going to do that. Try to be respectful to the entire audience, okay? Not everybody here has the same beliefs that you do either. So no clapping. Come on. Let's be adults. And no interruptions from the audience, okay?
You were going to shut her off. That is perfectly Robert's rules of order to cede time. So I wanted to cede my time for...
We don't operate under those rules of order. We give two minutes to each person to speak the community forum. We don't cede time.
You've allowed that before. Yes, you have. I've ceded time before.
Our next...
And we always clap after someone has spoken.
We asked that last month. We asked to not do that. So let's be respectful. If you want to speak, that's great. You're speaking to the board. It's not a show for the video. It's just to speak.
Dolly Lickard?
Hi, I had three and a half minutes, so I'm going to try to shorten it. I'm Dolly Lickard, and I am a retired 38-year public school educator, and my 10 grandchildren are fourth-generation Fort Thomas public school students. I appreciate this opportunity. It is way past time to end the mandatory masking of our children. Unfortunately, in our world today, common sense is definitely not common. Masking children has proven ineffective, unscientific, and dangerous. Masks cause diminished oxygen intake and increased accumulation of carbon dioxide in the body. They breed bacteria and viruses, cause headaches, drowsiness, anxiety, and lack of concentration. Masks also inhibit speech and language/reading skills. Masking removes the facial cues that enhance social skills and understanding for children. They also eliminate nonverbal cues that teachers often rely on to gather information about student learning. In short, masking children is physiologically, psychologically, and educationally damaging to our children. I fail to see the value in masking children six hours a day in school when masks are not required for after-school activities, or continuing to mask children because we quote "need to do something." The consequences of mandatory masking of children all day, every day come at a negative cost too distressing to ignore. Who is going to fix the issues our children now suffer because of the loss of normal life and schooling? And I personally have two young grandchildren who started school in masks, who are still in school today. One of them has some reading issues, and another one has an undiagnosed speech problem because of the masking that we've done to these children. I'm going to skip to the end. "The decrease in student learning and increase in mental health issues, drug addiction, and suicide attempts caused by this pandemic, and random unnecessary rules are alarming and evident. History will not look kindly on our societies and bureaucrats that have inflicted so much unnecessary trauma on our children. Many people in positions of power will rightfully be called on to do much soul-searching to explain their own hypocrisy and the long-term abuse they have imposed on our children. COVID, like the flu, is not going away, and we must learn to live with it. Constant changing of the COVID rules, arbitrary goals, and threats of NTI are tiresome and stressful, and cause people to withdraw trust and support for leaders. It is time to follow the lead of other districts and states and rely on science and common sense and do away with mask mandates. Please unmask our kids and return normalcy to our students and families." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Allegrini?
I'm sorry, I can't read the name.
Nicole Hutz.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, did I make you nervous?
I can empathize.
Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. I will always fight for liberty, the liberty for my children to make the choice. You know, as elected officials, you all, obviously you have taken oath of office to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America and the Commonwealth of Kentucky. There are no mask laws, and I think it's important to keep that in mind. And when we sit and look at the numbers that were released in the email on Friday, I think it's important that people realize, when you're talking about 100 per 100,000, how that equates to Fort Thomas. And that equates to 16 and a half people testing positive on a six-day rolling average. And I personally feel like in January of years to come, we are still going to be dealing with this mask issue. And the reason I say that is you have to think about the Barringtons in our district, you have Highland Springs, you have Carmel Manor, and those, two of the last two I mentioned also follow under Medicare restrictions, or guidelines, excuse me. And so they have even more stringent testing. And I'm just curious, have we done any research to determine what those incidences rates were in 41075 over the last few weeks, and how that impacted our numbers in the ability to, as of today, technically unmask our children? I just, I worry about the long-term impacts. I really do. And then finally, I'll just end with saying, I am just, I'm distraught, for lack of a better word, that there's going to be discussion to alter the calendar, and, you know, you listen to teachers and the kids talk, and it's to take the day off after the Super Bowl. Like, if you're preaching to us, the kids in school is the most important thing, why on earth would we even be thinking about taking the day off after the Super Bowl? Moms and dads have to go to work, so our kids sit at home with nothing left to do. And I'll leave you with this. I understand it's a big deal. I grew up in Chicago, 1985, the Bears were in the Super Bowl. I watched it. I enjoyed it. They won. But I got up the next day, and I went to school, and mom and dad went to work.
Well, not to give a preview, but we're not, we're not taking off the day after the Super Bowl. We are going to alter the calendar, though. But that was due to snow days.
And just to address, I guess, a common statement or belief around the 16, the incidence rate, that would be 16 for seven straight days, unique cases. So it would be 16 plus 16, on an average of, over that seven-day period of time. And in terms of prior Januaries, I already stated once, it did not exceed 100 any single calendar day in 2021. Not a single day. So I'm really, in terms of, unless there's another kind of significant variant, or there's something that hits in a very similar way to that first week of January, which we have not seen until that first week of January, I don't expect it to be at 100. If it does get to 100, and it does get to those positive cases in our schools, that's a problem, and we have to address it. It has a significant impact. And so am I. So am I. Saying numbers, that's what I'm saying. That was something, in terms of Barrington and these, I don't know...
I can speak to that really quickly. So we have a great relationship with NKY Health. So I can call them, and they can disaggregate our 41075 numbers by age group. So I knew when we were in the 300s that given day, our students up through, now, it goes to 19 in that age group, but they were at 377 in that given day. So that excludes our residential centers. Obviously, if we had teenagers in the hospital, and the case was reported there, that would be in those numbers too, but that's highly unlikely. So it would be our St. Catherine, St. Thomas, and Fort Thomas kids in that, that we have to remind ourselves that too. So we can take that number and pull that out.
I just don't understand the whole number today. Okay, so you're saying that doesn't include Barrington, Highland, or Carmel?
The number that was presented tonight, yes. But we have access to, if the numbers were to increase, we are able to get a drilled-down, disaggregated number by population age group to determine our school age hit. You know, we did, but we're in a better place right now. I didn't feel the need to call today because we were at 61.9.
Well, and here's the other reality, and we got to get back into the, into the public comments. But the other reality is, we're using local data to make, to make decisions. And we're using local data that has been a strong signal for when we have trouble in our community. The very vast majority of the fall, we were at 25 through 30. It was, it was in that range the whole time. A lot of communities would look at, they were, they were creating matrices that were saying that you would be in yellow, which would be below 15. What we're communicating to you is, is that when we get to certain levels, which are higher than a lot of people would recommend, we believe we can do business. But when we get to that level, we have to, we have to consider next steps. But I don't think it's going to be something that we're going to see with great frequency. The other piece is, is it's combined with a second data point. So we're not only looking at local incidence rates, we're also looking at total numbers of active positives in our school district. And it's an and proposition, not an or proposition. It is both factors have to hit, and that prevents us from one overly influencing the other. But again, I'll say it one more time, at 40 positive cases in our, in our school district, and a local community incidence rate that is really high, we have got to take action. So that's what I'm saying. It's not a, it's not a perfect number. It's not a perfect algorithm that we have here. None of them are. But that's why we picked two data points, and that's why we chose those two, because we're using local data to make our decisions.
And how do you count that number to make that possible?
Localized experiences of what we could handle. The vast majority of the fall was at a very low number. Frankly, we would have been an optional scenario all last fall with the system that we're talking about.
The numbers, don't you say that you're watching that daily, right? Have you done this tip on Monday and actually Tuesday?
It could be possible in the next couple of days. If it stays on the same trajectory, it's possible in the same... If it stays on the same trajectory, it's possible in the same, next couple of days.
So is mask optional?
Yeah, we would need a day or two to turn it around, but yeah, it's possible. Okay, I think we should get to the next person.
Okay. Dr. Jim Evans.
Just had a real brief comment. Cases have gone down nationally without a national mask mandate. Cases were destined to go down locally without a mask mandate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Daniels.
So I first wanted to say thank you to everybody on the board, just from what I've noticed the past year, that everyone's been respectful in listening to everybody. And I think the new rules that you guys came out, I think that's kind of indicative of the respect that you're hearing, what everybody's saying, and everybody on both sides, if you want to wear a mask, if you don't want a mask, everybody's kind of maybe been a little hard at you, a little bit. So I want to say thank you for that and keep up the respect. I also think it's important to know why governments are instituted. And so you all, as a Board of Education, I believe are a body of government. And so we know the Declaration of Independence writes out that governments are instituted to secure our rights. So you all, Board of Education, you're focused on different things, like a national government, a local government focused on high-quality education. But whatever decisions you guys come out of, it should always fall back to that foundational principle. Does this decision secure the rights of our parents, our students, the teachers, the staff? And if it doesn't, then consent needs to be gathered, like a dress code, for example. I consent that I give up the right, some of it, to say, okay, this is what my daughters or my son can and cannot wear, but I consent to that. So I allow you guys to take that away, as a parent, to say, okay, you can wear this clothes, you're gonna, I'm okay with the dress code. I'm not okay with wearing masks, I don't consent to that right as a parent to be taken away. I think there's other rights that are taken away. If we assume that you have to wear masks, that you have to be sick for even to be effective, then I think we're kind of assuming everybody's guilty of being sick, and guilty of spreading to somebody else. Kind of like our right to be innocent until proven guilty is being violated a little bit. Trial by jury, you guys are just five people, and you're not a random jury, and you just kind of decided, okay, everybody's guilty of being sick. I think there's other rights, too. As a Christian, my daughters, either, and myself, children are commanded by God to obey their parents. We're taking away religious practice there. If a parent says you don't have to wear a mask, they can't obey, and there, there's that, there's that conflict there. So really, the important part of that is, whatever decisions you make, run it through, does it violate rights? If not, gather consent, or come up with a different, different option. So.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Eric Peck.
My name's Eric Peck. Got two kids at Woodville, they're six and seven, kindergarten and second grade. You have forced my children against their will and mind to wear a mask all year, but making kids wear masks is child abuse. I came last year to the school board meeting in May, this is actually my third school board meeting. You guys said that it was because of state mandates, when the mandates ended, the masks would end, that was a lie. You've said that it was because of quarantine rules from the Health Department. I contacted our state Senator Will Schroeder, and he followed up with me and said that they're just recommendations, you don't have to follow them. That wasn't true either. In November, you said it was because of vaccine availability. I'm old enough to remember when it was supposed to be about vaccine availability, and when we had those vaccines for kids, the masks would end, but unfortunately, they're still here. And of course, last month, the explanation was teacher and student absences, but unfortunately, fortunately, the absences have gone away, and the mask mandate is still here. Then last Friday, we had the email about, we're doubling down on masks, we're going to have a system of metrics. This is absurd, because we shouldn't be monitoring COVID cases. People around the world understand now that it was a mistake to shut down schools, it was a mistake to shut down society, it was a mistake to make kids wear masks, there's no case number that would justify that. I checked the dashboard this morning, as you know, there's not much going on, I think there were five cases across the entire district, and I just don't believe you when you say that you're going to take them away when they hit 50. I think there'll be another excuse, because that's been my experience so far. Like Jason said, you know, parents should have the ability to choose what their students do, or their children do. The family is the most important institution in our society, and it's sacred that parents should be able to choose what their children's do, children do, and I wish you would respect that. So I would like for you tonight to just admit that masks were a bad idea, shutdowns were a bad idea, we never should have done this, there was never a reason to hurt children this way, and what we parents want is no more testing, no more masks, no more quarantines, and no more lying.
Okay, thank you. Tracy Whitney.
Brian and the majority of the board members have admitted that research has proven that cloth masks, unless it's an N95 mask that is properly fitted, do not provide protection against COVID-19 and other viruses. Furthermore, scientific evidence has proven you are making our children breathe carbon dioxide at significantly high levels in just three minutes. For those who say that we are making this political, I have a picture that shows the warning on mask boxes prior to the pandemic. It is very clear that masks were not designed to provide protection from any type of COVID virus, and that this is a political issue, since the virus has been linked back to China, which no American, which I think is unbelievable, no American wants to talk about China. But the box says, "will not provide any protection against COVID-19 or other viruses or contaminants. Wearing an ear-lube mask does not reduce the risk of contraction, any disease, or infection, single use only," and I'll share this with the board. By FTIS requiring children to wear masks, you are promoting the idea that masks can prevent or treat a disease, which is an illegal deceptive practice. It is unlawful to advertise that a product can prevent disease unless you possess competent and reliable scientific evidence. I pray that you each reexamine your conscience, your conscience at the physical developmental and mental abuse you're doing to our children. I pray that you look at the hypocrisy you're displaying to the community and outs, to the community at school and outside of school functions. Your stance on this political issue may or may not impact you in a legal manner here, but I do know that either way, you will have to answer to your moral stance on this human rights issue.
The population in our schools is primarily made up of students between the ages of three and 18. The new mask policy put in place uses a data point that references cases in people of all age ranges, so I feel like it's comparing apples to oranges. Not only that, but it's a known fact that COVID is here to stay, there is no beating this virus. So the fact is that nearly every American will contract the COVID-19 virus. Therefore, our focus should not be simply on the number of cases, but on the severity of outcome for the school-aged population. So when looking at this chart that tracks hospitalizations from October to October of 2020 to 21, you can clearly see that children are at a minimal risk from COVID-19. You can see the adult line versus the child's line that barely rises at the very bottom of the chart. Furthermore, when looking at the number of deaths from February, or sorry, excuse me, January 4th, 2020, to February 2nd of 2022, that's a two-year span, it is even more evident that children are not dying at rates even remotely close to that of adults and elderly. The total number of deaths is so small that the CDC cannot even represent their totals on this bar graph. Therefore, I will tell you that over a two-year span, only 910 children out of 73 million children in the United States have died due to COVID-19. To impact my point even further, that means that every child here in Fort Thomas has a .0000062329% chance of dying from this virus, which is significantly less than that of dying in a car crash, yet we don't outlaw cars on school property. While I do not discount the young lives that we have lost throughout this pandemic, it is important to note that it should not be our children who suffer through this pandemic with ridiculous mask mandates that don't work when they are not even at risk in the first place. I understand the risks, and I deserve the right to choose how to protect my children during this pandemic, not the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Dixon.
Hi, sorry to be back again. Hopefully someday soon I won't have to be, although, you know, there are, I will always keep attending the meetings, as I have been for quite some time. I just want to piggyback to start off something Jade said. Those numbers are also with COVID, not from COVID, so you can cut that down significantly because the CDC says approximately 70% of those children actually were with, not from COVID, so those numbers are even, even smaller. My kids come every month to this meeting. They're the kids waiting outside quietly, really behaving pretty well. They've gotten to the point where they can't stand it, but the one bright light is that my son, who's a sixth grader, says, at least we don't have to wear masks anymore because it's after 3 o'clock. Like, when that's the highlight of this thing, that's pretty bad. This has never been a pandemic of the children, so why do we continue to force them to bear the burden for statistically zero risk? Why masks when it's universally accepted they don't work? Brian, you just said whether it was masking or not, it wasn't. We have data that shows, from the CDC, again, from trusted resources, it's universally accepted, masks do not make a difference. Williamstown, your mentor, your superintendent mentor, they never went back to masks, they're fine, they followed the same curve. Columbus, cities, geographically in the same area, if you want something close, masks mandate versus not mask mandate, side by side, they were the same, they followed the same exact curves. You can do this time and time again, in place after place after place, masks do not work. We don't have to do something if we know that something does not have an impact, except for the negative impacts that it has on our children. Other districts, again, that are masked are fine. I'm not even going to start with the vaccine mandates, because now we're finding out all the harms. The question I do have is, will the mask optional, when we go back there, will the quarantine protocol change back to equal treatment? Because right now, they're separate and distinctly unequal treatment when both can spread equally. And then finally, like, you say that as a great thing, that we would have been mask-free the entire first semester. I think most parents actually take offense to that, because we weren't. It's just another data point showing that we made the wrong decision, right? Like, these are our kids. My daughter, who, while we were off on Christmas break and then unmasked, lost her cough from her asthma. Guess what, it's back now. All I can say is, kid, hopefully the mask will come off soon. Like, this is our kids, and we keep saying, like, in hindsight, in hindsight, well, we've already seen it, the data's always been there. We need to make data-driven decisions. Finally, I'll say this, and I'm just going to put it bluntly, because I don't know what else to do. If this were a graded assignment in the Fort Thomas School District, you would have failed. Failed. There's no way.
Clem Fennell.
Hey, good evening. I'm going to try not to be a broken record up here. I'm Clem Fennell, I've got two daughters currently at Moyer and another starting in kindergarten next year. And I guess with a lot of other people have the worry that we're going to continue just to have them in this COVID fear world at school forever. And it seems like, like others have said, we're just finding other reasons. And I'm glad that we're lightening up on the contact tracing, but I think we just, we need to move on from all of it. We got to keep going. I mean, common sense, freedom of choice, as others have said, has been removed from students and parents, I think it's tearing our community apart. I'm a lifelong Fort Thomas resident, I've never seen this many people going at each other online, everything else, and it's, I think a lot of it is just contributing to the fact, the factors that our school system has pulled away the individual decision-making abilities for ourself and our children. I think all COVID decisions, whether it's masking, quarantining, testing, hey, you get sick, you decide what you need to do, who, what doctor you need to see, but they shouldn't be dictated by school leadership. Our test scores are continuing to drop, our rankings are dropping, and I think it's partly because we're obsessed with COVID. The actions that our leadership continues to take are not reflective of what the community wants. I thought this was never more evident than when masking went optional, and I know it wasn't tracked, but it's apparently all estimates were pointing to maybe 75% of students going unmasked. I've attended all of my children's basketball games, everything else, there's maybe 60 people in there and four or five masks. People have moved on, the majority of our community has moved on, community's been through enough, our children have been through enough, and this group, our leadership, I know that you guys have moved on, I've been at events with you, I see pictures of you, and I'm glad, you know, if you're unmasked, and I'm glad that you're continuing to live as you want, but it's an individual choice. And that choice needs to be with parents and students. We acknowledge that the masking isn't stopping the spread, we acknowledge that kids are living their normal lives outside of school, but went back to masks. And I think that our quarantine results, or quarantine rules are resulting in a lot of the absences as well, just because somebody in the household has it, you can't go to school. I just think we need to, we need to kind of move on. So I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Myrna Eads.
So the Kentucky Department of Education's model is to educate, teach, and learn. We, the people, have come together to try to educate you, we're trying to teach you, and we're hoping that you're all learning from this. We know that masks don't work, we know that vaccines don't work, the ones that have gotten the vaccines are the ones that are spreading COVID. And here's the reason behind that. Where I work, unvaccinated employees get tested twice a week. Whether we're symptomatic or not, the employees who are vaccinated, if they choose to get tested, or they are symptomatic, they can get tested. One out of 12 are, one out of 12 employees who are unvaccinated are testing positive for COVID. All the rest of our positive COVID cases are vaccinated employees or vaccinated residents. So that right there says vaccines don't work. Also, and those vaccines are shedding the proteins. Beshear, CDC, the hospitals, what they're not telling you is that there's a 14-day window. So if, say I took the two Pfizer vaccines, and then I got my booster, and I'm within that 14-day window, they're going to count me as unvaccinated. That's where these numbers are generating from. Data is the problem, and they have somehow managed to demonize coughs, sniffles, and having no symptoms at all, but they've normalized masks, they've normalized vaccines, they've normalized the way we've been living our lives the last two years. And, I mean, colds have been around forever. And lastly, I'm running for state representative, and I would appreciate your support and your votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Toby Barlin.
It's not the main thing I want to address tonight, but I want to thank the board for publishing some guidelines for how we're going to make the decision about masking moving forward. I don't agree with them, but I appreciate the clarity of the guidelines. I wish that the board would not pretend that they're actually following public health advice, because they're not, however, I do appreciate the clarity of the guidelines. I will also say that I hope that you guys are researching what these people are saying. The statistic about 900 out of 73 million children have died due to COVID in this country, if that's correct, and I'll assume it is.
From the CDC website.
I'll assume it is. What was the percentage you gave of that?
Well, that was over a two-year period, so taking that number, divide it by two roughly, because they don't tell you each year, that percentage is .00000, something like 625. they don't tell you each year, that percentage is point zero 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 zero, something like six two five. I mean, it's a 99.999%.
I'm no epidemiologist, but in my calculator, 900 out of 73 million total is point 001%, which is tiny, but that's a factor of 100 to 1,000 off of the number that you're being given. Anyway, what I came here tonight to address is, last month at this meeting, when most people were focused on COVID and masking, somebody came up to this podium and suggested that we use the life and lessons of Martin Luther King Jr. in the upcoming Martin Luther King Holiday to make sure that we never have education in this district discussing racism and systemic racism, reference back to the social equity course that was canceled. It is insulting to use Dr. King as the launching point for saying we need to not teach racism and to cherry pick one comment from one speech, which is chosen by racists everywhere, to twist his words and to twist his message, is abhorrent. And I've been here in the past and asked this board to push back against clearly anti-trans comments that have come from this podium, and one of the six people up there publicly said, "I'm going to try to do better." Those comments last month were racist. I'm not trying to call a person racist. I'm calling the comments racist. And I would ask that, it's probably not going to matter because our representative from this district is trying to make sure that the district doesn't even have the opportunity to teach truth around this subject in the classroom. I will be done in just one second. Again, I will probably never be able to have this course, but what I would like to propose is that all of these parents who are coming up here talking about parental choice reflect on the idea that when we were trying to offer an elective on social equity in this district, they didn't think parents should have the choice then. It got removed. It is, it's, again, probably never going to happen, and I thank God there's a third-party organization in this town stepping up to provide the education when the district has failed.
Chris Smith?
I really don't have a lot to say. I just want to say I agree with all of the people that spoke except for Toby. I appreciate you taking into consideration everything that they've said. I know that you guys are in a really tight spot and are just trying to keep our kids in school. I would just strongly encourage all of you to step away from the computer and the numbers because there are actual children behind there that we really need to be considering. I had a daughter who had to quarantine for two weeks, perfectly fine, but I can tell you putting a 16-year-old by herself, as her father and I went through COVID and we survived fine, is not good for the mental health of any teenager or any child in the district. And so all I'm, I'm just begging you to stop with all of the madness with the crazy numbers surrounding COVID. We are all getting through this, and especially children with their 99.9% recovery rate. I heard somebody laugh at that. It's not laughable. This is not affecting children, but it is affecting their mental health. So I'm just, please, I'm begging you to step away from your computer. Look at the children. Allow these children who have not been able to see their teacher smile at them for two years, somebody has to have the courage to say, "We have got to stop this madness," and speak up for children. That's it.
Kelly Pratt Booth?
I'm back again. I'm the president of the Fort Thomas Education Association, and I proudly represent 151 of our teachers and two of our amazing classified staff members from our district. And I'm just here to throw some recognition around. So first off, Moyer's up. Their, our FTA members at Moyer have selected Jenny Miller-Horn to recognize this month. She is one of the Lighthouse coordinators for the Leader in Me program at Moyer, and she is currently helping the teachers at Moyer to set their wildly important goals. That is part of the Leader in Me program at each grade level. And for those that aren't familiar with what WIGS are, those are non-negotiable targets for students to reach in order to ensure their success. And so she has organized getting those goals set for students and then also providing a system for teachers to kind of showcase that teacher's success and so they can kind of track and see where they're at in implementing those goals for our students, which is pretty cool. Very appreciative of that. Our members from the middle school have selected Mickey Byer. I'm going to piggyback off of what Ms. Kuhnhein brought in before. Ms. Byer has put in a great deal of time into our eighth graders, in helping our eighth graders grow in their writing. As a result of Ms. Byer's work with these students, the middle school had 53 students, as Ms. Kuhnhein referenced before, that were recognized for their scholastic writing pieces, which is phenomenal. She has really been instrumental in taking writing at the middle school to the next level. The high school has selected Ms. Megan Boyman-Hennies. For those of you that don't know, she has a very strong tradition of excellence. She takes our kids to Nationals and We the People every year. They just recently competed at the state level, and she does phenomenal work. And what We the People does is it drives students to take a deep dive into the Constitution, and they have to answer really complex questions from a panel of judges using what they've learned. I'm so impressed by her work. She doesn't make just our students better. She makes our colleagues better. She's made me a better teacher. Can't, can't thank her enough for her tireless work. And one more thing, thank you for having us in school on February 14th. On behalf of teachers, thank you. Those days ahead of accountability assessments are incredibly precious. So we're thrilled to be in school on the 14th. Thank you.
All right. That concludes our public forum. So, get back to... Let's see, we did the, now we're on to action items.
So our first topic in action items as we get into business are the staffing guidelines. And so you have an attachment for our staffing guidelines. These are board-approved guidelines for as we assign our staff to our site-based councils, practices that we need to do prior to March 1st. These are the guidelines and expectations that the Board of Education has. Not significant changes from, from last year. One to highlight is around full-day kindergarten. It's fully expected that kindergarten will be funded at the full-day level, and so we're addressing staffing guidelines that way. Should that not materialize at the state level, then we may come back and request some revisions to that piece. Outside of that, really, the staffing guidelines are just clarity of the practices that we've engaged in.
Are we ready to?
To require approval. Yep.
I need a motion in a second to approve those staffing guidelines for 2022, 2023. I so move.
Second.
Let's see. School calendar, Jamie Flaherty?
Here we go. I am here to present a possible amendment for our 21-22 calendar. So we're experiencing a couple of situations within our current year. And so we are going to be talking about our late arrival the week of February 14th. It's scheduled for February 16th. And then, as many of us know, we had weather last week, so we have two dates off. Those were February 3rd and February 4th. So I'm going to present to you first the late arrival. We've had a lot of discussion. We've heard some public comment, as well as teacher comment, about the Monday, considering February 14th as a day off. We are proposing to have that be a shift in our late arrival that week so that the image up there presents where we currently are. Currently, right now, we present February 16th as late arrival, a one-hour delay. It would be that we would be proposing moving and removing the 16th. That would be a regular attendance day, full 8:00 AM, 8:15 for all schools, depending on the start time, and then shifting that late arrival to the Monday so that we would have two additional considerations, one for students and one for teachers. We're looking at an additional hour for students so that we can still have our opportunity to engage in our late arrival activities. That is a non-negotiable. Our instructional leadership teams and our teachers validate and extremely prioritize those collaborative opportunities, those typical Wednesday mornings once a month that we have. And we've talked in the past, even at the calendar committee, to remove those, and with strong embrace, we feel like they are extremely important. So we still need our teachers to do that work. We're considering that we would have a two-hour delay to allow them a one-hour delay, approximately, for some, you know, shifting. But then our students to be able to report at 10:00 and then 10:15. This does have, obviously, less instructional minutes in that given day. In our overall calendar, it is still an instructional day. Our teachers will still be working with our students that day. We do have some slight worries about attendance for students. And so with this added two-hour delay, we're hopeful that we can get all students here and have an experience on campus that day. So in summary, again, we would consider no late arrival on the 16th, but yes, late arrival on the 14th. And I'll show you an image of that in a second. That's toward the end. And then it would be a one, approximately one-hour delay. It's not exact science. Some teachers are going to be reporting at 7:30. So in your mind, it's not going to be truly a one-hour delay. But then for students, it would be a strong two-hour delay. Any questions about that?
I'd call it the WHO delay.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
So we could be working on that WHO delay. Yes. So then, with consideration, we are looking at shifting some days because of our missed days on Thursday and Friday of last week. I'm going to take each of those days and address them separately so that we're not confused. The first one, Thursday, February 3rd, we're looking to take that day. You can see two images. The top is where we were prior to our snow days. Right now, we're living in that top image, having closing day on the 3rd. That would be the last day of teachers. The 2nd of June would be our student last day. We are proposing to shift to the bottom image that would allow student last day on the 3rd. It's a priority that we don't go into the second week of June, but we still have the capacity to take one of those days and add that to the end of the year. So exams would be Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of that week. Teachers would then return on the 6th for closing day. So it would shift into that second week, but not our students. Okay? And then not to be confusing, on the 4th, we are going to do a shuffle. So we are wanting to take the 4th of February and place that on March 14th. Now, I don't want to confuse you. These calendars would be amended proposals. These aren't old versus new, like I did on the previous slide. So March 2022, we are looking to be in school for students on March 14th. Right now, it stands as a day off and a PD day for our teachers. It's a flexible PD day. So then, we are looking to take that flexible PD day, which most all staff, faculty have the opportunity to fulfill that in the summer or other days that are off, and move that to an election day. So our reg allows us as professionals to be in the building on an election day, but not our students. So then that would allow our teachers to have that PD day if needed to be in the building, rather than push closing day out an additional day. So with these two things, again, it would be for us to be making up March 14th and June 3rd as the two days. So you can see 21-22 existing on the left, those colors that would be straight from what's on the website right now. The one on the right would indicate that I've added February 3rd and 4th to be red. Those were our days off. Then I would shift the beige number for our late arrival for the 16th and put that on the 14th. Then shifting down to March, I'm taking the blue day away because that would be our makeup day one. I'm doing nothing in April. In May, I'm changing May 17th to a blue day that was above to give teachers credit for their professional development. And then in June, I'm looking to shift by one day, making the purple last day for students the 3rd, the closing day the 6th for teachers. Any questions?
So this avoids barring any additional snow days or problems. This avoids students having to go into the second week of June. It does push teacher closing day into the second week of June.
One thing that it didn't address either are two days that we were off. It would be third quarter. We will be shifting back third quarter by two days to allow those days to end on March 15th. So we would be making up appropriately so we'll balance our quarters. Our grading window will close on March 15th with that proposal.
Staff? You've shared some of this with some of the staff.
In small bits, the staff, we haven't had a tremendous amount of contact since it just occurred Thursday and Friday.
Bless you.
So from the, from the conversations with staff, I cannot speak for all staff, but in general, the feedback that we've received is that they would prefer not to go into June and have the instructional days ahead of accountability tests and kind of finalizing the year. You also have a number of families that perhaps would start vacations that following week, and so that's been the limited feedback that I've received. I don't know if that's consistent with what you heard.
I would agree. Yes.
Well, it does seem like a good compromise. You know, I know there's been some angst about how to figure this out. So I think, I know we didn't want to do it tonight, but I think we should talk about next year's calendar since it looks like this. But yeah, I think this is good. And as far as Monday, the 14th, I think, I think it's fun. I mean, you've got to celebrate when you can celebrate. We did it last year for the boys' basketball team. I think you celebrate events when you can celebrate them, and we have a good solution in that late arrival was that week anyways, and it gives, it gives everybody a chance to hopefully have a hard time sleeping that night.
I mean, every three decades, the kids stay up late and celebrate the Bengals. I think they're going to celebrate a win this time.
That's right. I'm good with this.
I was just going to, um... Yeah, that's fine. I can go ahead and do it. I need a motion in a second for the approval to amend what's the calendar year, the calendar...
21-22.
21-22.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Peggy? I forgot to formally do a vote on the previous. Do you want me to go back? Okay. All right. Moving on to discussion items. On the first one, you don't have anything. We might on our other. It's blank. So sort of, I just go on down to Johnson?
Yeah, Johnson is the first.
Okay. All right. Jerry?
There's not a whole lot to report. We talked about most of it last week, but just, you know, to state it publicly, we are not to the point to start bringing closed-up documents to you primarily because KDE has suggested that some of the remedial work for the temporary location be processed under the main project. And we are working with Cardinal Engineering on bringing those documents to you. We are not to the point to bring them to you tonight. We will update you as soon as we have further information on when those documents will be ready for your review and for us to request your approval. be ready for your review and for us to request your approval. In terms of some things that we've been doing, we talked about in previous meetings. We did enact the first step as we try and dealt with the sewer gas issue down there. I would characterize this as somewhat successful, but not totally because they have experienced some. And some days have not been as good as we'd like. KLE is continuing to work on designing out a permanent solution where they would reroute those vent lines and have them come out in a location on the roof away from the HVAC intakes, which is their suggestion. So they're working on that. They need to pop their head above the ceiling to make sure that where they would like to take those lines, that nothing was put kind of in that way contrary to the original plan. So they're continuing to work on that. Unless there's questions about those or other items, that's all I have.
So the venting, that was for the odor?
Yes.
And that's gone?
No. It's better.
It's better.
They've had some days where they've reported that it's not been totally gone. And, you know, but what we did was kind of always viewed as a temporary solution. And they're working on designing the more permanent solutions. Okay?
All right.
See you next month.
All right, I am here to present the Title IX report on behalf of Mr. Caldwell, our athletic director at the high school. And this is for twenty twenty-one, so previous school year. Typically, there are three tests. For our COVID experience, KHSA did not have a determination for any school for test three, so it would be as if that would be waived. We're exempted from that test. And remember that it would be a requirement that we pass one of the three in any given year. Typical experiences show that we test and we pass one. Similar experience for this report that I'm sharing with you today. We did pass the first test, which would be new participants in the underrepresented gender, which would be females at the high school. And so we did fall within the proper percentage to be able to consider being compliant with that. For the second test, that would be recent history of expanding sports offerings for the underrepresented gender. We did not anticipate passing, so they have said no, but that has been historical as well, that we have failed that test for previous years. That doesn't mean that that's a deterrent. We still want to consider what our female students would like. I know that just most recently, we have some female wrestlers. We have females that are trying different sports that are co-ed. And so I know that Mr. Caldwell is looking at opportunities that would benefit both male and female students.
Do those wrestling numbers not count for that or not yet?
They do. Well, it would have been twenty twenty-one if they were wrestlers the previous year, not this season.
Because we have, what, three, four, maybe five wrestlers? Seven female wrestlers this year?
I don't know if Mr. Darnold is the exact number.
I don't know the exact number, but I know if you walk in the fitness center, I mean, it is wall to wall. It's the coolest thing to see with masks and bodies just being thrown everywhere.
I've seen, I've seen some of them on the metal stand on the lawn, so, yeah.
Yes.
That's cool.
So a great outcome there. We're still going to continue to push. Mr. Caldwell has quarterly meetings, and so we'll continue to discuss. I know Ms. Kuhnhein is on that. And we will look forward to new opportunities continuing on twenty-one, twenty-two, and then moving forward twenty-two, twenty-three.
Great.
Any questions?
Thanks, Jen.
Thanks.
Star Winter Benchmark Data Report, Bill?
So as the district assessment coordinator, one of my responsibilities is to make sure that we are monitoring and reporting on the academic health of our students. So alongside our school administrators and school leaders, teachers and staff, we have administered a variety of academic assessments throughout the school year. One of the most recent ones is the Winter STAR assessment, which was administered to students in grades K through eight in December of twenty twenty-one. So that qualifies as our winter benchmark assessment. So what I want to share is something that's a follow-up from our working board meeting from last week. Another question was asked about, first of all, this is a nationally normed assessment, so taken nationally, and our scores are normed based on the assessment results from across the nation. And it was asked, when was the last time the STAR test was nationally normed? I responded to you, but I wanted to provide you with detail on that. The STAR math test was last nationally normed in two thousand sixteen, and the STAR reading test was last nationally normed in two thousand seventeen. So both were obviously pre-COVID nineteen global pandemic. So really, the consistency in the data that we report now as compared to the trends in data will be relevant for us to kind of consider and to talk about. So I'm going to share the data based on the winter benchmark in a variety of contexts. The first context that I'm going to share with you is the percentile rank. So percentile rank essentially is obviously a percentage out of one hundred. And really, the easiest way to think about it would be if you have a hundred students, you line them all up. If you performed at the ninetieth percentile, then you have performed greater than or better than ninety of those peers within your, within your group of one hundred. And so I have data for you that's comparing fall of twenty twenty-one, so approximately four months ago, four or five months ago, with winter twenty twenty-two. So just the differential of those, of really this academic school year. The fall twenty twenty-one is shaded in a pale red, pink, whatever you want to see. And then the winter twenty twenty-two data is shaded in blue. And so I'll draw your attention immediately to Highlands Middle School because it's our top row. It's our top school to kind of examine by data. The fall twenty twenty-one reading average percentile rank was at fifty-seven percent. And the winter twenty-two reading percentile rank was also fifty-seven. So that's a negative differential, or it's a zero differential. It's plus or minus the same. What it really means is that the students, we saw academic growth. You didn't see decline because the percentile rank, the threshold for that continuously moves forward. So even staying the same means that the students grew. Now, we're not as proud about that. We want to see greater limitations of growth, like we do see in some of the other subset, subcategories for the other schools. But what you will notice overall is an increase in academic performance by percentile rank for each of our reading areas at all three of the elementary schools, as well as in mathematics at Highlands Middle. To be probably really transparent with our data, I wanted you to also be able to see performance right now compared to twelve months ago, especially when we had conversations twelve months ago about COVID learning loss. And so what you see depicted on this screen is winter twenty twenty-one percentile rank data compared with winter twenty twenty-two percentile rank data. So this time, I'll draw your attention to Woodville Elementary School. It's the bottom of the school. So again, I'm just trying to bring your eyes to an easy road to take a look at. So in winter twenty twenty-one, about twelve months ago, the average percentile rank for students at Woodville, grades one through five, in reading was seventy-three, seventy-three percent. We saw an average percentile rank for Woodville students in grades one through five in this winter of a seventy-six percent. So that's about a three, obviously, that's a three percent increase from one year to the next. The same can be seen in reading when you look at winter twenty twenty-one in mathematics, an average percentile rank of seventy-six, whereas for winter this year, we see an average percentile rank of eighty-one. So an increase of positive five. And you see positive numbers. I said Woodville, but I want to make sure that this is real equitable. We have, we see increases in winter of last year to winter this year across all schools and all content areas. So that is definitely something that we find encouraging as we continue to press forward with continuous instruction for the remainder of the school year. Percentage rank only tells one story, though. Another piece of data that this test provides for us to review is a scale score. So this is essentially a raw score that the students earn. And they earn this based on an algorithm. So they earn their raw score based on the total number of questions that they continuously get correct. I mean, different questions, but as they continue to respond correctly, as well as how difficult those questions become. So the complexity of those questions. And if you're curious, the star score can range from a zero, probably really just a one, to fourteen hundred. So fourteen hundred would be the top echelon there. So I'm drawing your attention to a similar examination of data that I showed you when we first looked at percentile rank. So we have this year data only shown on the screen, fall twenty twenty-one compared to winter twenty twenty-two. So this time, let's look at Johnson. If you look at fall twenty twenty-one reading for Johnson, the average scale score for students in grades one through five in reading was nine hundred and seventy-six. What we saw when the students were reevaluated or reassessed on this same mechanism in winter of this year was an average scale score of nine hundred and eighty-eight. So we are seeing an increase of twelve points on that scale from one administration to the next. The same reflection is seen in math. This time, we could look at Moyer. Moyer's the third school down. We see fall twenty twenty-one, a scale score of nine hundred and forty. We see the winter comparison, where, and you tend to see this in math, and I told you in the fall, much larger gains in math because the content knowledge is much more new, and nine hundred and seventy-two is incomparable there. So about a thirty-two point differential between one administration to the next. I wanted you to, again, be able to see the data from one year to the next. So again, we're looking at a similar trend, or excuse me, a similar pattern as what we looked at with percentile rank, but these are now with scale scores. Twelve months ago, winter twenty twenty-one is depicted on the left, and then winter twenty twenty-two is opposite on the right, yellow and blue. So we'll go back to Highlands Middle School in this capacity. One year ago, as they were taking, as they completed the math test, we'll look on the right-hand side, the average scale score for grades six through eight was one thousand and sixty-two. We do see one year later that the average scale score at the same point in the year is thirty-three points higher at one thousand and ninety-five. We also get from the STAR assessment grade level equivalency data. So again, this is based on national norms, so all of the students in a given grade, in a given grade. So the test and the system understands that a student is in first grade completing this assessment. So all students that the system recognizes that are a first-grade student throughout the nation are compared as it relates to their mastery of grade-level standards, or I should say mastery of academic standards in general. And so what you are seeing depicted, let's draw your attention to the green first because the green is current data. This is winter two thousand twenty-two. And for sake of ease, we'll look at grade one. So we look across grade one, we are seeing grade-level equivalencies of first-grade students at Johnson being two-point-two. So they are into the second month of their second grade in terms of their academic content knowledge, what they're able to demonstrate, what they're able to read and decipher based upon the prompts. Moyer at first-grade level in winter, we're seeing a grade-level equivalency of two-point-three. So that's second grade, third month, or third month of second grade, I should say. And then Woodville, same thing. We're seeing second year or second grade with one month. And when you, I asked you to look at the green first, now you can look at the blue. Those are comparisons between how are students in that grade level, of course. Now, the grade level, first-grade students this year are not the same as the first-grade students in that chart. I want to be really clear about that. But the grade level assessed is. So when you look at Johnson, last year at this time, their grade-level equivalency was a one-point-eight, first grade, eighth month, as compared to, again, this year, second grade, second month. You would have to sort of make an assumption that the consistency in instruction this year, as it relates to not having two closed schools in any capacity, as compared to what we had to do last year, could potentially play a factor, right? Same is true at the middle school level. You see grades six, seventh, and eighth shown with their grade equivalency in reading. We are only looking at reading right now. Get excited for math in five seconds, but we have the Highlands Middle School data for last year in blue and the current winter two thousand twenty-two in green. Of course, I would have put if they were higher in green, but they're all higher. So they're all green. So that is why that was sort of chosen to be depicted of this sort of trend. Math is a piece that I know the board has always prompted me to continue to bring data for inspection. You will find that what you see shown on the screen demonstrates the exact same methodology as what we looked at for reading. So this time, let's look at grade three. Grade three will be in the middle of your screen. We are looking at math scores, grade equivalencies, comparing last year winner, twenty twenty-one, with this year winner, one month ago, twenty twenty-two. So at grade three, we're seeing that last year, for example, at Johnson, the grade-level equivalency in third grade was a four-point-three. That's at the fourth grade, third month. This year, we're seeing them perform at the fourth-grade level, second month. So potentially one month less advanced in terms of content knowledge, but PS, they're over a year ahead in terms of actual what they should be expected to know, or they should be able to demonstrate as it relates to academic concepts and academic clarity. I think what we really should be proud about, there's going to be a variety of things, but, and you should already be proud, but his mathematics at the middle school level, we're really seeing some good national normed data related to math trends. And so that's promising, knowing that the school is real dedicated right now to being responsive to academic data. They have been at their site-based council meetings, their school leadership meetings, and under new leadership at the school level, being very intentional with data trends and examining data over time, and then being responsive to that with programming adjustments. And so I think that you're starting to see some real momentum in that regard. I also wanted you to be able to review student growth percentiles. So these are now based on medians, not averages. We're looking at below and above. This is literally a middle score. And so when you think about it, with regards to student growth percentiles, these were not available to us in the fall because the fall was considered our baseline data. So when our students, let's take grade two this time, okay? Haven't had any love yet. Grade two, when those students took the assessment in the fall, they were put into peer groups, okay, based on how they performed. So all students in grade two that performed at the ninety-seventh percentile, all the students in grade two that performed at the eighty-first percentile, all the students in grade two that performed at the forty-third, whatever. And so now, during the winter administration, twenty twenty-two, they are compared against those same peers in that same group with how much they grew academically as compared to their peers. That's what our student growth percentile would show us. So what we're always going to want to look for at minimum is really trying to be at that fiftieth percentile or above because you want to be in the top two quadrants of growth. That's going to promote the most, the highest level of academic achievement. By all means, we always want to be in the top quartile. Yes, a hundred percent. But remember, this is a median score. So if you have two hundred, and I'm making this number up, two hundred and eighty eighth-grade students, we're looking for the middle part of that to still be above the fiftieth percentile. That's a very, very high level of achievement. And you will see, as it shows in our winter scores, that all of our grade levels in reading, and math will be the next slide, are at that fiftieth or right at the cusp, grade three at Johnson, and grade seven at Highlands Middle School, right there at, you know, the fiftieth percentile for student growth, excuse me, the growth percentile, when you think about reading and their achievement compared to same-age peers. I do also think you need to be mindful of the outrageous numbers that we see in the sixties and seventies across the board with regards to student growth percentiles. Those are off the chart. Those are very, very high. And so that shows some really good growth as it relates to fall to winter under the tutelage and instruction of our, of our teachers, and of course, the support that happens at home, and then the hard work that our students are doing. Math shows the exact same types of data, and really, it shows the exact same types of trends. We see Johnson, third grade. We see seventh grade at the middle school, and then also that sixth grade, the middle school, right at the cusp of fifty. They're very close to the fiftieth percentile with regards to student growth. We're right there. But everybody else in all other areas are certainly at that level or above. And so you're really seeing that our students are growing. You can definitely make the claim now, if you think about science, we can make a claim that our students are growing on average greater than their same-age peers nationally. That's what that data a hundred percent shows. The last piece of data that I wanted to show you that I think you'll find very interesting, and I've not ever yet presented it to you before, and that's our STAR early literacy data. So we have STAR reading, and we have STAR math that are typically given, and this is a general statement, typically administered at grades one through eight. The STAR early literacy is a combination reading and math test that we give to our kindergarten students. On occasion, first-grade students will take it, but I have only extrapolated kindergarten data here. So here's what I want you to look at. Let's look back at Woodville. Okay, let's go to the bottom. You are seeing fall data, two thousand twenty-one, compared to winter data, two thousand twenty-two, and you're seeing three things in a row. You know all this stuff. You're seeing percentile rank, followed by scale score, followed by grade equivalency. So if you look at Woodville kindergartners in the fall, they had an average percentile rank of fifty-six, fifty-six percent. They had an average scale score of seven hundred and thirteen, and they had an average grade equivalency of point four, which we know means the fourth month of their, really their first year of learning. When you look at Woodville in winter, two thousand twenty-two, and compare that, we've increased our average percentile rank. This is an average, which means we have students below and above this. I just want to make sure that's really clear. The average percentile rank, eighty, okay, that's an increase of twenty-four. We have an average scale score of seven hundred and ninety. That is an increase a lot. And then an average grade level equivalency of one-point-one. So our kindergarten students at Woodville are performing at the first-grade level one month in. That's tremendous growth that we're seeing from our youngest learners. And to be clear, I said Woodville to draw your attention to a line. I want to make sure everybody feels like I'm treating them fairly. The other schools have the exact same results, just in different formats and in, you know, considers different numbers of total students and things of that nature. But our students will end up graduating from STAR early literacy to the regular STAR in reading tests. They just get a little bit more supports here, and it's more age-appropriate. So that is our STAR data report for the first semester.
Did you say this is the first time we've seen kindergarten?
It is the first time that I have. It is the first time that I have intentionally shown you that data. That's my fault. I apologize for that, but I'm happy to show it tonight for the first time.
I mean, those numbers for the winter seem very high. Am I right on that? Like, it'd be like, wow, when you first pulled that up, you would say that seems impressive?
So I think it's, yes, I, yes, let me just make sure I, yes. I also think you have to remember, you know, kindergarten students come in, and Jamie presents this data to us every year with different levels of readiness. And actually, we had great readiness rates this year, as we typically would do in our school district. But I think what you're seeing is formal instructions and formal school experiences are really leading to quick adaptations of learning.
It's like compounding on those, on the positive start that they have. They were already ahead. They were halfway through kindergarten, levels of preparedness. But that continued to grow.
Yeah, and I think it's a trifecta. I mean, I think we have engaged students. I think we have competent teachers, and I think we have supportive parents that are making sure that that happens. Because the kindergarteners aren't going home and, like, by themselves, like, they're obviously being shepherded, so.
I was going to say it's the great teachers and principals.
Administration.
Principals that'll jump in a cold pool.
It's a group effort.
All that other data. So what comes out of this that you can go back and share in the schools to give them, you know? Is there more that, behind all this that you can share with them so they know what works, what doesn't work?
Absolutely. So a couple, two things about this. First of all, I want it to be really clear that I don't have to go back and share this with the schools. The principals are on it.
They got it.
They were on it before you ever even received this presentation. It was old news to them. By the time I was like, hey, I did this board report, they, they were done with the data. So they are already taking the lead in navigating through professional learning community conversations back at the school level. And specifically, what I know that they are doing is the STAR Assessment suite that we utilize, it's Renaissance Learning. That was the image that I portrayed right here. It is a suite and a, and a platform that allows for a lot of reporting that is actionable. So for example, there are instructional reports that you can pull that are related to a class, related to a grade level, or related to an individual student. And what it's really going to do is it's going to provide you sort of, it's sort of a GPS. How do I get Bill to be able to increase in his ability to achieve at higher levels in math? Well, Bill's next steps, like the actual steps to follow are one-digit-by-one-digit addition. Then let's go one to two digit. And so it's really giving sort of a baseline for how to attack the next level of readiness for a given student, for a class, or for a grade level.
And, I mean, too, the, is there, and I know, I think I know the answer to this, is there discussion between, I mean, when you look at those growth numbers, and we talk about growth. Growth is not achievement. Growth is the progression. So regardless of where kids started, even if they were struggling, are they growing? So that's a lot, a big connection to instruction. And you look at that first grade at Johnson and Woodville, you look at that fifth grade at Moyer, you look at the third grade at Woodville. I hope we're sharing out amongst the elementary schools powerful practices because it looks like all three buildings have some really strong spots. So can we learn from each other? Because those growth numbers, when you get above 65 or get to 65, are just pretty amazing.
And conversely, I mean, obviously, there are, these are median scores. So Johnson, first grade, 74th, the median score, which is sort of outrageous. But that means that there are scores that fall below that. And so conversely, you know, the schools also are planning attacks for how do we target direct instruction, supports, interventions for those students who are not demonstrating growth in a given cycle or not meeting expectations for performance as it relates to national norms. So all of that is really the challenge that the schools are faced with. What I can attest to is that, under the current leadership in each of our buildings, we are seeing actionable plans come to fruition as it relates to responding to the data.
And I think our, our schools need it, as Jeff sort of alluded to and Julie supported, the celebration of the impact that the whole school teams are having on kids is something that, that I think is worth saying over again. So I want to, I want to repeat a couple conclusions, and I'm, and I'm taking some risks here. So correct me. I'm asking you to correct me if this isn't right because I want, when people look at the slides to, to see some of what, what we're trying to talk through here. So when we look at winter or fall to winter, we're looking at individual students or those grade levels, those actual same students from one administration to another, okay? And so we're looking at actual growth there. When we look at winter to winter, what we're, what we're looking at are slightly different groups of students. Most of them are the same students, but they're, they're at different grade levels. But we're seeing comparisons of where we were at this point in the year. But to really bring home the, the, the point that Julie was making, when you look at growth percentile, you're looking at students of where they started compared to people at the same ability levels. So we're looking at growing individual students where they are compared to the same students in terms of where they started in a different administration or a different season's administration. And so to be able to do that, you know, sometimes you'll say, you'll say things like, well, you, you have a really gifted kid. And this gifted kid, what are we going to do to grow him? Well, well, we're comparing data for this gifted student to other gifted students and making those comparisons. So, so our, our schools are having a big impact. So clean up anything that I said that may have been.
There's zero that needs correction. I think the only thing I would add on to accentuate that would be, for example, when we look at winter 21 to winter 22, Highlands Middle School reading, okay? Just look right there. I am presenting to you data based on the combination of 790 students in grades six through eight. The school is looking at, what does this look like between sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade? And you talk about sharing, yes, sharing across schools is very relevant, very important, and yes, is in place and could be expanded, of course, but is happening. The school itself is also utilizing strategies, especially, like I mentioned, under the leadership of the current administration, to spread the wealth of high-impact strategies that will move the bar and continue to accelerate student achievement and enrich their opportunities.
And this one, I'm really unsure about. If you go to the grade equivalency.
Let's do math.
So is it, is it fair to say, for comparison's sake, if you go grade one, blue, to grade two, green, that that is roughly the same cohort group? So you can see what kind of grade level equivalency they have.
Johnson Elementary School, winter 2021, 2.3 grade equivalency in first grade. This year, that same group of students relatively is now in green in the row below it, and so 3.3. So that's one year of certain academic growth. That's rather consistent.
In some areas, one and a half to two points with the same groups of kids. So it definitely bears celebration.
Especially at the middle school in math. Yeah, that's great. I appreciate that add-on. Any other particular questions or things you might want more information on?
This is great. This is great. Hopefully, they are celebrating that and taking that. I mean, it's very good.
We also recognize there's more work to do. And so this is, I told you, it's just an analysis of health. We have a variety of things. Like, I'm already going to be ready to present to you the next piece of data, which is, we've been doing COGAT and Iowa. So we'll have that next, and then we'll have another STAR assessment, and then we will have more and more and more. So that's our challenge right now, and that's kind of what we're focused on, is continuous evaluation and progress.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Board committee updates. Is anyone? The only thing, only committee that I, well, I was on too. Let's see. I did the foundation, and I reported to that. And then I attended a meeting for technology. And we were trying to get up to date on our technology throughout the district, so, and that's it. Okay, we have approval consent agenda. I need a I need a motion in a second to approve all the items contained there in the approval consent agenda.
Hi, so, mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. And with that.
So I know we promised to not do additional others, but I do want to thank one person in the audience who came to be here as a, been a great support, Dr. Fred Carter. He's from the KASA and has supported a lot of my personal growth and development throughout the year and came up here today. So I want to thank you for, for making the trip from Bowling Green.
And if there's nothing else, the meeting is adjourned. Oh, he likes me to slap the gam.